Pastor Dyke Verkek, Life Church Assembly of God at 4100 King Springs Road. We'll come forth this time, give our invocation, and also lead us in the place of flag. He's about the same height as Pastor Osmond, but would everyone please rise? To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those folk, anyone looking for a church, a new church or a change, the folks at Life Christian Assembly of God, I'm sure they'd love to have you there. 4100 King Springs Road, right across from Ryan Park. Starts at, services are 10:30 to 12:00. I've been there. I know that's an hour and a half, but it's, it's good. It's all good. Agenda changes, we have none. The only thing that I would mention under the mayoral reports, and I know probably some of the other council members may mention this, is that yesterday when we celebrated our Day of Independence, July the 4th, I guess was the first full year that we've had fireworks. And I know we got an awful lot of calls and concerns from our residents. Just so everybody will know, this was created by the state of Georgia, the House of Representatives and the Senate. They sort of unleashed the fireworks situation, so we don't have any control over it. They're, they're, they're pretty loud. I'm just afraid it's going to happen again on New Year's Eve, probably Memorial Day, for sure, 4th of July. Somebody might have a number, you could call your representative and let them know how much you appreciate fireworks. I mean, I like them, but it's makes dogs, I know my dog did some very unusual things yesterday, because they were just scared. Anyway, other than that, it was a great 4th of July. Department head reports, Mr. Mike Jones.
Mayor and Council, we have two department heads will be presenting tonight. One is our police chief, David Lee, and that'll be followed by our community relations director, Ms. Jennifer Bennett. And whichever one is queued up first, go right ahead. Looks like Jennifer's going to be.
Before, I forgot to mention this, is there anybody here that's running for any kind of elected office? We got a runoff election coming up. I'm, I'm sorry. I said runoff election is when, May the, when, of July? I'm just five, six months.
That's my deep gratitude and appreciation to this community for the support and kindness that I received. So Smyrna, thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I look forward to continuing to work with the residents of Smyrna and its leaders to ensure that Cobb County remains a safe place to raise a family and an excellent place to do business. Now, thank you.
Luke, thank you. I don't think we've had any other candidate that lost that came up and thanked us. So that's, that's pretty neat. Thank you so much. Okay, now Jennifer Bennett, Community Relations Director.
Right. Good evening. This is a brief report. There are some things coming up. Mayor's State of the City is coming up July 14th at a joint meeting of the Smyrna Area Council of Cobb Chamber and Smyrna Business Association. And it's listed on the city website with links to where you go to sign up. So, that happens in July, July 14th. And the second summer concert is Saturday, July 16th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM with the Get Right Band. And if you wonder what they're like, they sound like The Black Keys, Jack White, Sublime, James Brown, and the Red Hot Chili Peppers. And then in August, we have the annual city birthday celebration with fireworks. That's Saturday, August 6th, from 6:00 to 10:00. We have Tim Purcell, Ann Banks, and Shane, giant birthday cake, and fireworks at the We've had a little change with Smyrna Few Truck Tuesday. We had some weather that caused cancellation tonight, but when we're up and running, we have a new shuttle. So when the weather is really good and parking is really competitive, there's a shuttle running from behind City Hall. It picks you up from behind City Hall. All you have to do is follow the signs. It'll drop you off behind Taylor Bronner and then pick you up there. The last pickup at the park is at 9:00 PM. And I just wanted to make citizens aware that Smyrna has another ranking from niche.com. Smyrna ranked number six and findings with number seven, number nine among the best suburbs in Georgia. And you can find information like that on the city Facebook page, which will be at the end slide after the police chief's presentation. Any questions? Good? Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you very much for the report. Next up is our police chief, Mr. David Lee.
Good evening. We've been pretty busy here the last few months, going over a couple of things. Detective Andrew Grubb received an award from the Cobb County Law Enforcement Association for a gang rape investigation he did that actually resulted in numerous arrests of different gang members, to include charges for like human trafficking, drugs, and weapons. And as of right now, at least six people has been arrested. Actually, the investigation is still going on. So, but he, he did an excellent job with that. Our honor guard has been pretty busy in the, we participated in the annual Cobb County Law Enforcement Memorial Service. The, it's one that we have on the square every year. It's put on by the Kermit Sanders Fraternal Order Police Lodge. They also provided a 21-gun salute to Atlanta Braves on May 27th. And it was pretty cool because they, before that, they came out to the department, they did some video clips, did some interviews. So several times throughout the, the night of the game, our department was featured on the big screen there. And, you know, as, as a big hit, if you'll excuse the pun, but, and they won that night too, which made it a very good, good game to be at. They also participated in a joint color guard presentation with the fire department at the Sunday service at Life Church. We also unfortunately had several funerals that, that we participated in. You know, most recently, we lost our crime analyst, Susan Matthews. And prior to that, we had some spouses of some retired officers, you know, that passed away. So that's more of a sad note there. Some other things, we're a partner in education with Belmont Hills Elementary School. And one of the things that we've done with them too is that they, they have a program where they, they put together lunch packets for the kids. And we've participated with that in preparing some of those lunches and hand them out as well, which is pretty rewarding, especially with those young kids who may not get a lunch meal during the summer. So it's, you know, it's been a real good thing. We also, that's not on here, but we've got a competition going at the police department to raise funds for one of the programs at Belmont Hills. So I had to relax our mustache policy. Of course, it doesn't matter if I didn't shave, I couldn't grow one anyhow.
Are you growing one?
No, I'm just giving the $30. But, so, and that just started the first of this month, and it lasts until September 2nd. Then the kids there get to judge on who has the best mustache, or the worst, or, you know, who knows, depending on what you're saying. Are you a former patrol officer, just doing normal patrol duties, have made several pretty decent sized drug arrests from just, you know, different traffic stops? And, you know, and I've told you before, I have a program where if our officers take a gun away, you know, from somebody who's committed a crime, they get a $20 gift card that I pay for out of my own pocket. The most I've ever spent in one year was $480, and up to 460 right now. So any raise that comes later, I'd be greatly appreciated. I just wanted to go over some of our stats, and this for the first month of the year as compared to last year. It takes us about mid-month to get the, all the stats in, so that's why it's only from January to May, it doesn't include June. But our overall crime rate, part one crimes, is down a little over 9%. Whereas our calls for service are up almost 10%, arrests are up almost 22%, citations almost 100%, and, and the warnings are up over 110% too. So we, you know, the officers out there, they're working, they're, you know, we've got a lot of younger officers, so, you know, that's, that's good. And for some people, it's not so good when they're in the arrest category. Major Joe Bennett, I'm going to call him up here. You know, he recently graduated from the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard, which is a three-week program up in, on the Harvard campus. But I'm going to call him up and let him tell you a little bit about it.
Joe, you don't look like a Harvard guy.
No, sir, I still do not feel like one. And, but let me do say that I'm also $30 poor from the mustache competition, so. But I, I would like to start off by thanking Mayor, Council, and the chief for allowing me the experience that I, for the experience that I had on the Harvard campus. It was amazing to say the least. Just to give you guys a brief rundown of what we did there, it was, it was a program that was designed for all disciplines of government, not just law enforcement. So I attended a class with, again, all disciplines of government, from the water departments to public health, elected officials, both at the local and state level. And there were also representatives from four different countries, being Denmark, Ireland, Australia, and the United States. So altogether, there was 59 students in the program, and altogether, the, the collaboration between the students was, was phenomenal. The program, we started off our week by attending an island on Boston, in the Boston Bay, where they blindfolded us and put us all together and made us go find trees. It was called the Outward Bound Program. It was for personal growth and a team building exercise. And once they finally had us meshing as a group, they began trying to team our values against other people's values, creating conflict amongst the group in order to teach us how to more or less deal with the conflicts of the values. We had courses in public finance, negotiation skills. We studied quite extensively both Hamilton and Jefferson, and their leadership styles and how they managed local government, or I'm sorry, the federal government. And again, we studied the founding fathers and the founding documents, and how those documents relate to government on a local level. The weather was phenomenal. The experience was phenomenal. Like I explained to Chief Lee, it was more of an immersion experience than it was a program. Most days lasted 12, 14, some 16-hour days, and we were totally immersed in democracy for three weeks. So it was a fabulous experience. But again, thank you all for the opportunity, and it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
So Joe, it was a three-week course? You were down?
Yes, good deal. I was on Harvard's campus for three weeks.
Good deal.
Well, how many could we have made, or how many did we make? Thank you again.
Thank you, Joe.
Let, let me say one more thing is only 59 was selected out, over 1,200 people. It's, it's a very tough thing. Joe had to write five different essays on his application process. Before he got up there, they sent him a packet of books and read aheads that they had to read before he even got up there. But it's, it's very impressive. It's a hard program to even get accepted into. So Joe does such a great job, and we're very proud of him. Both that, any questions?
Anybody recently retire?
Yes, I'm sorry. Detective KK Rooser, after 40 years on the job, and, and she's not leaving us completely because, you know, we're finally getting our reserve officer program kicked off, and she's going to be one of the first into our reserve officer program, which would be really kind of neat because she, you know, she's such a guru when it comes to the investigations for crimes against children. And the two newer investigators we have work in that area will have her there, you know, a couple hours, you know, here and there to assist them with any other questions. So it's really kind of a win-win.
Good deal. Any questions? Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
And just, for the record, council member Doug Stoner is on vacation, and so is our city attorney Scott Cochran. So they're off somewhere together at the beach, I guess, so. Item 5 is land issues, zonings and annexations. A 2016-258 Public Hearing Zoning Request, Z16-008. Zoning Amendment to Modify The Currently Approved Site Plan And Building Elevations From Zoning Case Z14-005. 0.36 acres, Land Lot 593, 1607 Walker Street. Phil Younger is the applicant. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The property was originally rezoned from RM10 to RAD Conditional in March of 2014. Unanimous vote of the city council. The original zoning was approved with site-specific, site plans and building elevations, and these are the two conditions that's requiring this to come back. Rusty, if you'll come up and tell us about that. The biggest change is we're going from rear-entry garages to front-entry garages, and there's some modifications to the elevations of the homes.
Rusty, before you do that, I think I saw the applicant here. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Okay. Now Rusty, I guess, if, Mr. Nubich.
Yes, Rusty, if you give us some more information on this, please?
No problem. Good evening. As Mr. Jones stated, this, this was originally rezoned back in 2014. It was a duplex. They came back through for rezoning. They tore the duplex down, and they're preparing to build two detached single-family homes. That original zoning case basically showed two contemporary-style homes with rear-entry garages. They're planning to change this, change the elevations of the homes and go to front-entry garages, and we'll get into that here in a second. You'll be able to see the changes and plans. The site is zone RAD Conditional. There's no change of the zoning. It's currently a vacant site. It's an, an active construction site. They're putting in the stormwater management facilities right now. Hopefully, if they get approved tonight, they'll be able to pull the, the building permits for the homes. The land use classification for the site is not going to change. It's going to remain medium-density residential. To the north, east, and west is medium-density residential. To the south is moderate density. Here's the approved site plan from zoning case 14-005. As you can see, the, the home's fronted on Walker Street, but the driveways went past the, the rear of the house and the access, the driveway, or the access to garage on the rear. On the right-hand side of the page, you see the, the proposed home elevations at that sign. Mixure brick and stucco, two-story homes. Here's the new proposed plans. They're just going to have individual driveways off of Walker Street, and they're going to have just front-entry garages off the front of the home now. And as you can see, the, the architecture's pretty, pretty different. Here's the site today, if you walked out there and checked it out. And these are the surrounding properties. Community Development recommends approval of the requested zoning amendment with the zoning conditions carried over from rezoning case Z14-005. I'm not going to read them all to you. I'll just tell you what the changes are, and those are highlighted in red. We're proposing to remove stipulation number two, which requires protective covenants in a mandatory HOA. They're proposing to do individual stormwater management, management facilities on each lot, so they don't have a community facility, so there's no need to have that HOA anymore. Number five is being removed. They don't, they're not developing any streets or, or right-ofways, so we just thought it would be prudent to, to eliminate that. Stipulation number 13 was modified, basically to measure the length of the driveway from the building face to back a sidewalk. Since the orientation of the driveway's changed, it's, it's not being measured from building face to the private drive. Oh, I'm sorry. And we added number 17 specifically tying the, the zoning amendment to the site plan submitted with the zoning amendment application, and number 18 tying it to the building elevation submitted with the site, with the zoning application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty, do you have the square footage? Has the square footage of the proposed homes changed at all?
Um, I believe they're relatively similar, and he'd be better apt to answer that question for you. He can give you direct square foot numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. No one signed up for a public comment, so.
I would like to ask the applicant, since he's here, just that question about the square footage, since the architecture has changed. I wouldn't say significantly, but it's definitely changed.
Now, don't mess this up.
Good evening. I'm Phil Younger.
Jeffrey, does phone need to be sworn in? Okay, thanks.
And my son Matt is here. He lives directly across the street, and his, my daughter-in-law Rebecca is a realtor with Dorsey Austin. And through this timeframe, which was dragging our feet, it seems like, when we got this report, through marketing inquiries and all that, we, this seemed to be the better plan. This is what was desirable. People looking for rear accessible lots where you have a rear yard that's not elevated above a garage and whatever. A walkout backyard is what they were looking for. Now, the square footages are, I don't have the exact numbers, but they're identical probably within a few hundred square feet. I mean, and basically, we kept the size of footprint as tight as we could, but the total square footage is about the same.
What price point are you estimating for these?
In the high 400s, if we can do that. And part of that, too, is that the site topography allows for, it could go both ways. We could have had the, the underground parking lot, but we would have to grade back the site and create a differential there. And now we are able probably to do it more in the crawl space. So there's, there's some, some benefit for that also.
And I'll ask you this, because this came up on Bank Street recently, and, and Walker Street is a very different animal from Bank in terms of, of traffic count, but will the, will the homeowners exit nose-first or tail-first? When they, will they back out of their driveway straight onto Walker Street?
I presume so.
And then again, and, and again, I think that's, I just wanted to clarify that, because we had this conversation at our last meeting, talking, or two meetings ago, talking about some houses on Bank Street, but Bank has a lot more traffic. So I just wanted to, basically to say, I'm, clarify that I'm comfortable with cars backing out onto Walker Street because there's probably a drastically different amount of traffic that goes down Walker as opposed to.
Houses we did on, on that side of Walker Street are all real, loaded. Now, Colin Gallagher just built his house right next door, and he's got front-loaded garages, which is right next door to this property.
And the market force is just people preferring a larger backyard?
Yeah, and able to, a walkout backyard, if you will, you know? And the houses we have where, where they're rear-loaded, you come in and there's a garage, and then you're up, you know, 10 feet.
Right.
And you have to take a stair down to the backyard. So from a marketing point of view, I think that's what we find is more desirable, if you can get it.
Thank you.
You did good.
At this point, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve item 5A. This is item 2016-258. This is the public hearing for zoning request, Z16-008. The zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations from zoning case C14-005. It's a 0.36 acre tract, Land Lot 593, 1607 Walker Street. The applicant is Philip Younger.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of motion, please vote. You did good, Phil. Item B, 2016-259, Approval of Ordinance 2016-16. Annexation Request, 100% Owners Requesting Annexation Of All Tracks Of Land Lying And Being In Land Lot 632, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 0.28 acre tract, being known as 1687 Donaldland Drive, Spurney, Georgia, 30080. It is and will be in. It is and will be in Ward 3. It'll be effective August the 1st, 2016. Is the applicant here? This says on my agenda, this is a public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here that's in opposition to or would like to make any public comment concerning the annexation of this property. Let the record show there is none. Anything you want to add to this, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, this was a voluntary annexation proposal. The certified letters were sent to Cobb County Clerk's office, as well as Cobb County Community Development's Planning Division, and we received a non-objection letter with stipulations from Cobb County. It was dated June 28th of 2016. The staff recommends approval.
Ms. Teri Nolowicz.
Yes, I'd like to invite Rusty Martin forward to tell us a little bit more about the annexation.
I don't have a presentation for it. It's just a straight annexation. The property owner wanted to be in Smyrna and obtain our services, so we're just processing the request.
And what fine services they are. Thank you.
Mayor, I would add that the City of Smyrna is already doing the utilities within this development. It is an island within the city.
Okay, Ms. Nolowicz.
Yeah, this is actually part of one of the larger unincorporated islands that we have in Ward 3, and so I'm delighted to make this motion tonight, because, you know, even if we get it in piece by piece, bird by bird, that is better than having all of it be incorporated. So, hopefully, there will be more annexations coming in this area in the future. But at this point, I would like to move to approve item 5B, 2016-259, approval of ordinance 2016-16. Annexation request with 100% of owners requesting annexation of all tracts of land lying and being in landlot 632 Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of 0.28 acre tract, being known as 1687 Donnellan Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080 in Ward 3. This would be effective August the 1st, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve this request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Thank you very much. Welcome to Smyrna.
Welcome to Ward 3.
Item 6 is previous licenses. We have none. Item 7 is formal business. We have none. Item 8 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 9 is the consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for councils?
Yes, sir. There are three items for consideration tonight on the consent agenda. Item A is approval of the June 20th, 2016 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is award RFP 16036. This is the Antler Trail sanitary sewer replacement. It's been awarded to the lowest bidder, Site Engineering Incorporated, $361,708.60. And we need to authorize the mayor to execute the related documents. You'll recall, this is a replacement of 935 feet of 10-inch sewer line and the addition of one manhole on Antler Trail that runs out to the East-West Connector. Item C is approval to use council chambers on Tuesday, August 16th, 2016, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council Annual Board Meeting and Elections requested by Councilwoman Nolowitz.
You hear motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 6-0. Item 10 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Councilmember Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everybody had a fun and safe Independence Day. I do want to talk about fireworks for just a second. As Mayor Bacon said at the beginning, this was something that was a law passed by the legislature allowing this and left us to deal with it. I've heard from a lot of folks who are fairly angry, and I share your anger. Walking out of my house last night was, sounded like a war zone to me, and I shuddered every time I was watching my little nine-month-old baby on the monitor, and every time a loud boom went off, you know, she was jumping around and trying to sleep, and it wasn't good. So, know that I share your concern and your anger, and I hope that you'll get in contact with your state representative and state senator, as I'm going to, and let them know that I don't appreciate the fact that we have to deal with this, and I didn't like the way it went down yesterday. Without a yield, thanks.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
You know, last night was like a nightmare. From 8:00 to 12:00, people in his ward were shooting off fireworks, these great big boxes of fireworks. I wanted to call him so bad and just say, "Stop your neighbors." But anyway, long story short, it was my little, poor little dog. He was miserable, absolutely miserable, and they just kept going off and going off and going off. So, yeah, be sure and get in touch with your state senator, and if you're in Ward 2 or Ward 1, our state senator is Hunter Hill, and nice man, but this law was not thought through very well. It just has created more problems than it's solved. So, anyway...
They got babies crying even 24 hours after the fireworks went off.
Well, anyway. So, we look forward, and, oh, Hunter is on Facebook. He's on Twitter, and he, something else I just saw when I looked him up, just Google Hunter Hill, and it'll tell you what he's on. But somebody needs to start and think this through. I don't want to have another holiday like that. I may have to go away for the holidays, so I can't even be at home. But anyway, with that, I yield your honor.
Ms. Teri Nolowicz.
Thank you. I have two things tonight. First is that early voting has started for the runoffs that we're having here in Cobb County. The only location open right now is the main elections office for Cobb County. That's at 736 Whitlock Avenue, and you can early vote there all day long until, I believe, July 22nd. And the second thing I wanted to talk about is also the fireworks law. Ms. Bluestein mentioned Hunter Hill. You can call his office at the Capitol. The phone number is 404-463-2518. Again, that is 404-463-2518. No need to be rude, no need to yell, but you can certainly call him and let his staff know that you don't care for the law. The thing about the fireworks law is that the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, essentially neutered municipalities and counties in terms of what they can do to address the noise from fireworks. We can't ban fireworks within the city limits. All we can do is, you know, apply the noise ordinance to them, and that's only after 9:00 p.m. Nobody is shooting, no one should be shooting any fireworks after 9:00 at night, now that it's no longer the Fourth of July. Honestly, my analysis of this legislation is that it was brought forward by a lot of lawmakers from less-populated parts of the state, and this fireworks law really fails to recognize that here in Georgia, you do have a lot of folks who live on a lot of land, and they don't have any close neighbors. And then you have those of us who deign to live where we could borrow a cup of sugar or an egg from our neighbor by just walking next door. And it's communities like ours and more urban areas where it's really problematic when you have anybody who wants to shooting off fireworks anytime they please. There is an issue of liberty, and then there's issue of consideration. And consideration works both ways. And while I respect my neighbors' rights to explode fireworks, whether it's Arbor Day or the Fourth of July, they need to understand that they can't do it after 9:00 p.m., and they cannot do it before 10:00 a.m. And it's nice just to remember that we do live in a community. But again, you can call Hunter Hill. You can call your neighbor. You can also call the police non-emergency number if your neighbor is shooting off fireworks after 9:00 p.m. But, you know, be polite, be neighborly, but that's what the story is with fireworks. Without a yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
I'm not going to talk about fireworks. But I'm almost ashamed to admit, I did something Saturday that I've never done, and I went to the Smyrna Farmer's Market, and it was absolutely great. So, I encourage everybody to get out and go to the market. I bought fresh tomatoes and two steaks from one of the vendors in there, and several other little small items here and there. But it was a great attendant. I talked with the lady that manages for it, and she said, "We have an average attendance of about 600 people." So, if you want some fresh vegetables, or steaks, or canned pickles, or anything that comes fresh from the farm, go out and visit Farmer's Market and, you know, do like I did, even if it's your first time. Without a yield.
Mrs. Susan Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight, and without a yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll touch on fireworks. I had a lot of celebratory fireworks in my large neighborhood, and some of the folks were properly expressing appreciation for the throwing off of the yoke of the British rule, but for the most part, they were just having a grand old time. It was noisy for a lot of the night. For a lot of our neighbors, they decided to spend a small fortune on these fireworks. So, I think collectively, we had 25 to 30 displays in my neighborhood. So, it was pretty raucous down on the South End this morning. But again, the legislature, don't forget the House members. We've called out Senator Hill, but they're House members as well. Senator Hill's not the only one who voted for it. I think Rich Golick in the House voted for it, and he's one of our Smyrna representatives. And I think you just make sure to let them know that there's an opportunity for improvement in the wide-open spaces rule that they decided to tack, that they decided to take. But I appreciate folks celebrating America's 240th birthday. It was, it's a great milestone. I wanted to say, there's no report from Finance, but I have a town hall meeting that I'm scheduling. I'll let you know that that date is August the 11th. I know it's a little early to announce that, but we intend to meet Smyrna Fire Station Number 5 on Cooper Lake Road at the East-West Connector. There is a pending matter that will be before the Planning and Zoning Board prior to that. And after that, as is customary for me, I have a town hall meeting to let people know about this development that's proposed. This one's on Fontaine at the East-West Connector, and so we want to give folks an opportunity to see the development proposals, see the staff recommendation, and at that time, the planning and zoning deliberation on that, should it be completed, and at least to know about what the presentation of the property owner is, and allow for some feedback on it. That's August 11th, 7:00 p.m. at Fire Station Number 5. Generally, we get a lot of other issues that people bring up, and I'm happy to deal with that. I'm about to publish my next newsletter next weekend, so if anyone has anything they'd like to have as a part of that, let me know. Any of the department heads have things that they want me to include. But also, if you are not yet signed up for my newsletter, you may go online and sign up. Just email me. We'll include your contact information and get you signed up for our regular quarterly newsletter. I did want to also mention that, wearing a different hat, the Smyrna Business Association were proud once again this year, Department with the Chamber of Commerce, the Smyrna Area Council, and hosting Mayor Bacon as he delivers his State of the City address at the Smyrna Community Center. This is always a sell-out event. We have some renovated space that we're going to be showing off, and depending upon the response from the crowd, and again, the price of the admission to this, I don't think, Jennifer, you had a chance to mention this, but it's free. The Cobb Chamber of Commerce, through its generous partnership and sponsorships, is picking up lunch for everybody who attends, but you have to register through the Cobb Chamber of Commerce's website, and the mayor will give an update on where we are, the state of the city. He always waits till after the budget's put to bed, so that it's different than the other cities in that we have a mid-year budget, start of July 1. And so, you'll get the most up-to-date and current thinking the mayor has on the state of the city. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Mike Jones.
No, sir.
Jeffrey?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Terry Graham. Okay. With that, we do not have a show call here, and we've got three folks that have signed up for Citizens Input, Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
My first comment tonight, I don't know how to even say it. I am so embarrassed with Cobb County's turnout, because it includes Smyrna, 13%. I've never seen so much mailing, calls. They pay their entry fees, mailings. For 13%, I think the people of Cobb County should be ashamed of themselves. That is awful, and I just feel sorry for the candidates. And it's the same with Smyrna being 20% or less in the last four elections. I don't know how we can wake up the people to get involved in Cobb as well as Smyrna. I'm looking forward to that runoff on the 26th. I'm amazed how many people don't even know there's a runoff the 26th. But what I find interesting is why I asked people, "Did you vote in Smyrna or Cobb?" "No," and I asked them why. I'm amazed how many say that I only get involved in the national election, not the local elections. I'm amazed at that. I say, "This is your infrastructure. This is where you live." I can't understand your taxes. You need to know how your money's being spent. This is what you see every day." And they look at me like, gee, kind of like, I never thought of it that way. So, I mean, it's, I guess, educating the public, but I was very shocked, and I'm very sorry for the candidates, to see that 13%. And I'll be very interested to see what the percent is in the runoffs on the 26th. Secondly, I'm glad you've addressed this thing on the fireworks. I'm one that doesn't read the Marietta Journal. I don't watch Channel 2 every day. But I think the responsibility, once the city attorney gets it from the State House, I just found out this morning, and it slipped through the cracks with me and other people I've talked to today. I didn't know the times. Now, the third, the fireworks all around me stopped at 11:30 at night. I did not know about the 9:00. And Sunday night, Monday, Glenn Park was still shooting them at 1:00 in the morning. So, now that I'm clear on that, I think, and there has been, I called the Police Department Front Desk and Dispatch, and they never mentioned the times. I could have called, because my next-door neighbor and right behind me was shooting those 150, 200-foot fireworks. It was like Vietnam. And I would like to see this council put it in the water bill and spell out the times and the requirements, because there was so much shooting going on. That would be a very effective way that people do read that at home. I do read that. Had I had that in there, I would have known about it. Please, if you could, put it in the water bill to spell it for the people, so they know every night of the week. That would be very informative. That has slipped through the cracks. A lot of people don't know about those times, and I can't stress that enough. And I thank you.
Amy Vargas, 835 Lake Court Recycling Center.
I'm Amy Vots. We were here at last council meeting, and Terry and Max, I know, Max, you are on vacation, but I emailed you both the morning after the council meeting, and I didn't receive any response whatsoever, and I thought my communication was nothing but nice. I was just asking what next steps to be taken, and I feel that's not right. I feel like I should get a response if I'm reaching out to my ward rep. That's point one. Point two, I wanted, because we kind of rambled last time, just wanted to be clear. We moved to Smyrna in December of 2014. It was five months before the recycling center opened. We were aware that the city was building something, and we had faith. We assumed, because Smyrna is so beautiful, that they would, of course, take care of the facility and think about the citizens, and think about not only the residents, the local businesses, the park, the dog park, when you guys are building it. And I'm kind of disappointed. Like, I love the facility. It's a great facility, but finish it, please. Like, beg of you. And I also wanted, like, beyond that, to say, "We're not alone. You guys have pamphlets that we passed out. We have a petition going with the neighborhood. There's 81 signatures total. There's 41 local, and I will read you guys some, but please reference it in your own time. They're all in there." But we want your help, and we'd love to be included in whatever you guys are talking about. I heard you on the news saying that you have two options. What are those? Like, can we know? Can we be a part of this? Like, we're dying to get a resolution here. The noise is just obnoxious. And with my last minute, I'll go ahead and read you some of these quotes. Oh, and to point out, there is a map, too, that we've highlighted. All the red are all the local citizens and businesses around the facility that are disturbed by it. Lori, "My house backs up to the recycling center, and I have two dogs. Enclosing would diminish the noise level." Stacy, "I recall that when you told us they were building the center in the neighborhood, that dumpsters would be inside the building. Does anyone else remember that? Am I remembering incorrectly, given that the city made the decision to place it here before even letting residents know?" know." Billy, "Really need help with the noise level. This is a concern even before the recycling center was built. Any help to reduce the noise would be greatly appreciated by the neighborhood." I don't live near the center, but the noise, drive up there, it's terrible. It's creating, an appropriate acoustic barrier is the right thing to do. Please help. Please."
Thank you. Cynthia Lawrence, 1350 Overlook Cove Southeast, comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to address you this evening. I would like to make mention, in addition to what Mr. Bakery had said earlier, that the South Cobb Coffee Club that meets at Rev Coffee every Wednesday morning is indeed working on events that will hopefully wake up some of the local voters. Now, we happen to live in a Smyrna where I believe our city council representatives are indeed responsive to the citizenry, and you guys have a lot of responsibility. You have a big job to do, and we appreciate the good things that you do for us, but it is worthy of your consideration when you have situations such as, Ms. Amy, she has a difficulty that hopefully you all will resolve. We also believe that there is a need for change in education, in which we're also addressing through several teachers in different levels of education, for trade school interests, as well as preparing our upcoming students for university, as well as meeting the needs of even our younger citizenry, so that they will know how government operates and have an opportunity to voice their concerns. Ms. Terry, I really appreciate your suggestions on calling Mr. Hill. I most certainly will be doing that, and I do think it does need to be modified. However, I would not like to see fireworks go away. I think they're a wonderful part of our celebration. They're a part of our history, and I think all of us enjoy it when it is modified and within reason. And thank you again, City Council, for working.
That was the last of our speakers. If there's no other business to be brought forth this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at, I don't have my watch. 7:49.